Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens in the nation.
Amen.
All right, thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Zeraski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Grabkey.
Present.
Present.
Hannah.
Here.
Yurko.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me begin by reminding everyone that the Labor Day holiday is coming up and that city offices will be closed on September 6th. Of course reopen on the 7th. Due to the Labor Day holiday, there'll be no refuse collection on Monday. Refuse collection will resume on Tuesday, but be delayed one day throughout the week and then finishing up on Saturday. So if you have any questions about refuse collection, simply call our DPW department. That's 446-2440 or see our website. And I have a number of presentations, special presentations tonight, three to be exact. And the first one involves an update on all of the exciting economic development projects that we have ongoing across the city. And with us this evening is our Economic Development Advisor, Luke Bonner, who's going to walk us through some of the initiatives and projects.
Mr. Bonner.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Good evening, members of council. Tonight, I'd like to run through briefly some of the economic development projects, a little bit of past and present and some things to look forward to in the coming 12 to 24 months. First thing I just want to highlight, and this would be over the last, since 2015 really, economic development as a group or as a division can play a very active role in projects. An active role could mean anything from making a business case about doing an investment in the city of Sterling Heights, helping a company locally expand by finding other options in terms of real estate or space, by coming up with some creative ideas and solutions for redeveloping underutilized properties into something more productive. And since 2015, the amount of projects that we worked on have totaled about $176 million in total investment with roughly 745 new jobs associated with them and $11 million in new city tax revenue. So, you know, we like to make sure that from time to time, we can talk about the total economic impact that we have in terms of the service that we provide to the city. Some of these projects, of course, are well-known. Many of them, we've attended groundbreaking ribbon cuttings for, but this Sunnybrook Golf Course redevelopment has been a very significant project for the community. Obviously, the Mitchell Plastics being that lead anchor company locating their tier-one supplier to FCA. The redevelopment of the Liberty Park softball complex into the Amazon Distribution Center. And then working with UTech, which was a great startup story. They literally started in about 1,000 square feet of space in Sterling Heights and then continued to grow to a facility on Center Drive and then ultimately built a new 100,000-square-foot facility in the Corridor Improvement Authority District on Van Dyke. And then some of the more recent projects, the Apparam expansion on 18-and-a-half-mile road, the Mag Industrial expansion on Mound and Center Drive, and then the Rickman Headquarters building. This is an older building of their previous headquarters, but we did play a fairly active role in working with Rickman and Mike Damon to do a property swap and to help offset some of the cost of sanitary sewer lines so that we actually created more developable real estate than was potentially available at the corner of 18-and-a-half and Mound. You know, overall, when we look at capital investments in total in the city, and that's from every asset class, that's residential, commercial, and industrial. You can see the numbers going year over year in terms of, this is based on total value of building permits pulled in the city. Since 2018, so the previous four years, a total of $773 million of building permits have been pulled through the building department. The one number I want you guys to look at that kind of sticks out here, 2020. And what we just went through in 2020, $358 million of building permits pulled in 2020, which, you know, could have been a very diff, it was a very difficult year for many people, but we know that there continue to be a lot of expansions, a lot of new construction, a lot of renovation projects last year. Probably surprising. Some other strategic initiatives and projects that we are constantly working on, some of which you've already seen, the Corridor Improvement Authority Master Plan update we presented previously. And we've already begun implementing portions of that strategic plan. Specifically, we have a property under contract currently that we hope to close in the next 45 days, which is a key piece of property that would be ultimately one of the sidewalk parks. That's part of the outline in that master plan. We'll have an update very soon on Lakeside Shopping Center. We have been extremely busy working with the ownership of Lakeside. We meet with them weekly. They are actively putting together a plan and a proposal for the future of the mall that we will hopefully see in the next 60 days. Hopefully, knock on wood, we should be ready to present something publicly on that. The Caldean Community Foundation project has been officially approved for all of their funding and tax credits by MISTHA as of two weeks ago. They received their final financial approval from the Michigan Housing State Development Authority. And then the Element Co-Working Space at Velocity. We plan on having a ribbon cutting on September 20th for that program. We actually just signed two new tenants last week, both in the software development field, and we're excited for more activity to happen at Velocity and at the Element Co-Working Space. Retail. So some very exciting retail projects coming forward. Total Wine, which I know everybody is patiently waiting for its final opening. There is active construction going on right now, preparing for that to open. We have Mission Barbecue in Shake Shack, two new retailers coming to the city, both on M-59 in front of Lakeside. And Jolly Bee, which is a, how should I put this? It's an Asian-based fast-food chicken restaurant, which appears to be one of the most popular restaurants and growing significantly. And they are going to be locating where the former Denny's was at M-59. So this will have fans coming from all over the place to eat here. I have to admit, I've never eaten at one before, but I'm guessing that the line is going to be significantly long when that finally opens, similar to Portillo's. And lastly, one other update is related to housing. As we know, the housing market here has been incredible from the homeownership side. Single-family home prices were on the rise last year. We have developers literally finding every single piece of land to build just 10 to 15 houses because of the demand to live here is so high. There's also just an overall sort of national market for multifamily housing. So more apartments, more rentals. There's a huge demand for that. Prior to just a few years ago, I don't think we had any new multifamily units built in about 10 years until Tony Gallo built Sterling Landings over at 15 and Van Dyke, which has been incredibly successful. But the kinds of new residential multifamily housing we're seeing is very different. It's more of like an urban-style development than what would be considered a traditional suburban apartment, right? Two stories, you know, big units, family room, kitchen, dining room, bedrooms is what we typically would have seen here. Now we're starting to see, and I'll just kind of go left, big picture is the former Sterling Inn, I still call it the Sterling Inn, but the Wyndham Hotel has been approved for a conversion to apartments. Those are much smaller units. They're smaller units that are going to cater to a more active professional that doesn't spend all of their time at home, but spends all their time with friends and working and traveling and doing other things. Top right, that is the new proposed Tony Gallo project on Shaner, sort of out in the parking lot area, so using that underutilized land, if you will, that was basically, you know, parking that was never used to build a four-story housing product. And then bottom right is the Caldean Community Foundation, which again is more of that urban-style development, ground-floor retail, street-facing, and being more catering more towards the walkability of Van Dyke and the proximity to Dodge Park and downtown Utica and that sort of thing. So a lot to look forward to. Been a very active couple of years with a lot of new projects, and we're certainly excited to continue to work on more exciting projects for city council to review.
And I just wanted to say that this is helping to continue the synergy that's been underway in the city for a number of years now and helps to fuel the city's growth and also helps to keep property values very strong, not only in our commercial areas or manufacturing areas, but most importantly, our residential areas as well. So I wanted to compliment our economic development team led by Mr. Bonner, who work very hard every day, day in and out, making sure that these projects are being advanced and doing all that we can to continue to support them. So, thank you. And moving on to another item, switching gears, I know everyone's tired of hearing about construction projects, but unfortunately, this evening, we have to tell you about another construction project that is forthcoming. This is a project that is, it's called the Macomb Interceptor Drain Rehabilitation Project. It's something that is being coordinated by the Macomb County Public Works Office. And we have with us this evening a presenter who's going to walk us through what this project entails. And it's quite significant and is going to result in some major traffic control. So, Mayor, I'd like to call on Stephen Downing, who's going to give us an overview of this project.
Thank you, City Manager Vanderpool. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, council members. Okay. All right. What we're here to do is provide an update for you on a couple of the projects that we have going on in our MID, as you guys are familiar with. We've come here frequently just to update you on where we're spending the money and how we're improving our infrastructure and, to use Candace's words, to not have another sinkhole. So the Segment 5 project, which is first up in the slides here, is the reach of our main interceptor that extends from the ITC corridor, right there on 15-mile road on the south side, down to just past Hayes Road. This is a little over 8,000 linear foot section of pipe. We've been in the middle of this rehab project for approaching the first year at this point. And the scope of work for this particular project includes several items. One is cleaning and removing accumulated sediment from within the interceptor. We're going to be installing a new control structure and dewatering pump station, which is located in the ITC corridor, just on the south side of 15-mile road. We're then going to facilitate some slip lining with a glass fiber reinforced polymer pipe, approximately 7,000 linear feet. And then we're going to facilitate some spray lining of about 1,300 linear feet of pipe and manhole risers within this reach of sewer. And I have an image up here that shows a little bit of the technology that we have in our toolbox these days. This is a point cloud of all of the survey data points of the interceptor, existing interceptor. And this was taken about halfway down during excavation for the new CS-12 access shaft. So this is what I think is pretty interesting in terms of the technology that we have as we're constructing these underground infrastructure pieces. And it's a little bit better to look at than just a piece of excavating equipment digging a hole in the ground, if you ask me. So I wanted to share that with you this evening. And here I have just some bullet points of the summary. As I mentioned, we started almost a year ago now. We've been working actively within the confines of our construction area and the ITC corridor, excavating the shaft and putting in a permanent bypass pumping structure. That will continue on here for the next several months. We're now approaching, and this is really the reason why we're here, this is a good time to report to you, is that we're getting to that point where there's going to be some noticeable public impact as we get into our spray lining operations. And we'll get into that a little bit in the next slides. But as you can see here in the rest of the schedule summary, we have much of '21 tied up with construction of the CS-12 shaft, and then we get into some of the final tasks in 2022, wrapping up in September. So as I mentioned, we have upcoming impact to the public. And what does that mean? What does that look like? Well, in order to facilitate this work, unfortunately, 15-mile road is pretty much on top of the interceptor through much of its alignment. And that presents some problems that during the engineering design aspect of things, we look at very closely and we try to mitigate that. And I think you'll see that we've done that by putting the access shaft where we did. It wasn't an ideal location to have it at the extreme end, but from a public impact standpoint, it made sense to absorb that during construction and maybe extend the duration of construction a bit. So as we move into this next phase, we'll be working from a manhole located at the general area of 15-mile in Fontana. This is going to have two things going on. One, a single lane closure on the eastbound 15-mile right lane. And that lane closure will be in effect for a better part of the year, as that'll serve two purposes. One, the spray lining activity, and two, it'll be a moving lane closure to accommodate the sediment removal from a few access, the few access points that we have to get into the interceptor. Second part of this is the closure of the east access lane to the Villa Fontana subdivision entrance. We understand that this is not ideal for those folks. It's not something we have taken lightly. We've worked hand-in-hand with city offices, with city engineer Brent Beesaw, with Scott Sharon, and eventually, city manager Vanderpool, to talk through how we can do this and ease the impact. So we've put together a letter that was reviewed by city offices jointly with our office. We've mailed that out to the Villa Fontana residents, as well as some of the other homeowners and business owners along 15-mile road. All this work is being performed with, from existing manholes along the 15-mile road reach, and it'll be performed during the normal working hours, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Here's a map of the lane closure that I just discussed that shows the extent of the lane closure along 15-mile road and additionally with the eastbound, or the east entrance of Villa Fontana closed off. And as I mentioned, that manhole is right, I don't know if you can see the cursor, but it is right there. And it's unfortunate, but it's the safest means possible to get the access to this location to facilitate that work. That concludes the Segment 5 portion, which is located here in the city of Sterling Heights. That will wrap up a very important project that we've been working on for several years with some advanced maintenance, grouting work and such. We appreciate the city's cooperation and patience with our office while we've facilitated that work. While we're here tonight, I wanted to take an opportunity to update you on another MID project that we have going on, that we call the Segment 6 Rehabilitation Project. It is not located within the city of Sterling Heights, but as the largest MID community member, we feel it's important to keep you up to speed with what's going on. So I have, the bottom of the page here is a map. I'm going to point on here a couple spots. We're going to be rehabilitating the section of pipe between Control Structure 3 and CS 2, and that's at the intersection of 15 and Garfield. It's about 1,300 linear feet of pipe. And then the section of pipe that goes from Garfield East, approximately 2,100 feet, will also be rehabilitated during this project. I've noted on here just a few of the highlights from it, which include slip lining with HOBOS, sediment and debris removal, as well as some odor control improvements, specifically connecting to the biofilter on 15-mile road. This work is occurring, as I mentioned, along the border of Clinton Township and Fraser. And we're working with those communities as well to mitigate the impacts to their communities, but at the same time, invest and enhance the infrastructure. The goal here is to extend the useful life of our interceptor system. HOBOS material is an impervious, very chemically resistant to corrosion. It's one of the things that our concrete has been subjected to underground. It's out of sight. Inspections have warranted cause to get in and do immediate work in a lot of areas. HOBOS is guaranteed for 50 years, and they say that it can last as long as 100 years. So we're definitely investing in the future, and I think that's a great follow-up to the presentation previous, to the amount of economic development going on in the city of Sterling Heights. The map up here shows the lane closure, again, while not in Sterling Heights, just to point out that there will be an impact that may be shared by some residents of the city of Sterling Heights and their commutes to work and for leisure. This project is just kicking off here this month. The construction notice was issued August 6th. Substantial completion is January of 2023, and the final completion the month after. So again, this is just another project on the list of things that we're doing out of our office to improve the reliability of the underground infrastructure. And Deputy Baker, if you would like to step in.
I guess it's been so long that I forgot the way to Sterling Heights, so. Just want to give you a quick update, Commissioner Miller wanted to, not only on our MID projects, that we've got two major MID projects going on here, but as you know, she, when she took office, she vowed that we would not have another sinkhole along 15-mile. And in 2004, we had the collapse. That was in Sterling Heights, 15-mile west of Hayes. And then in 2016, right before she started, we had the collapse. It was in Clinton Township, Fraser, 15-mile east of Hayes. So again, that was fixed on time and under budget. But right after that, she began annual inspections each and every year, having people down there in the pipe, taking a look at the infiltration and the leaking, invested money now in maintenance, routine maintenance, and investing in grouting, where we go in and actually physically grout chemicals into the pipe to stop all leaking. So as Steve mentioned, we have two large MID projects that are going on. It's going to extend the life of those projects by decades and prevent another collapse. We're investing $55 million between Segment 5 and Segment 6 that Steve mentioned. But that, it's a lot of money, but it's certainly a lot less than having another sinkhole. So that's the good thing. The first Segment 5 that Steve talked about started last fall. It's in the ITC corridor. That's where most of the work is going on. But that's a critical area because of the ITC corridor, the power grid, as well as Red Run Drain, which is right by there as well on 15-mile. So most of that work, people will not be seeing. It's in the ITC corridor. There's a shaft there where they can access the 11-foot pipe and put in the HOBOS. And then, as Steve mentioned, in a couple of weeks, we'll be down at the 15-Hayes area, just one lane down. We will coordinate with the city in terms of the traffic plan as well as signage. We will get that posted. And then second, as Steve said, Segment 6, starting in September. It's not in the city, but a Sterling Heights contractor was the low bid on that, so earned the contract. In terms of costs, all these project costs are funded by the district. As you know, our office investigated the sinkhole in 2016, and we recovered $12.5 million of lawsuit and insurance recovery money for that. That will help pay for this project, as well as we're requesting state and county American Rescue Plan funds for this. And if we don't get all of that, we're approved for low-interest, 1.875% interest financing from the state. But just to go over in the last, in six years prior to Commissioner Miller taking office, the annual sewer rate increases, we're averaging 10 to 15% a year. Happy to say, in the last four years, the average charges to Sterling Heights have been less than 3%. And this year, less than 1%. So she's committed to maintaining our infrastructure so we don't have another collapse, but also doing it in a cost-effective way. As Steve mentioned, this information is on our website. We will be working during the day, and we appreciate everyone's cooperation and patience as we go through it. So that is all we have unless there's any questions.
Mayor, thank you. I wanted to make sure that the community and, of course, council have the latest information on this. I want to thank Mr. Baker, Mr. Downing for providing the update. And of course, we'll include a link on our Cone Zone site, so residents can also go to the city website, click on our Cone Zone page, and then we'll have a link that goes to the county page, so you can get the latest updates.
Before we dismiss them, I would like to let the council ask any questions, since we have them here, if there are any. I know I have a couple, so. Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to Mr. Downing. In reference to Segment 5 in the Edison corridor there, whatever it is now, for years and years and years, the odor there is unbearable. The high school is right across the street, and my kids went to high school there. The bandroom's right out in front, across the street from there. And I know how that has been an ongoing issue. Can you tell me with Segment 5, the Segment 5 project, will be, will there be anything as far as odor mitigation for the future? And we also have new subdivision very close to there as well.
That's a great question. And to address that, within this project, there are certain components of it that will help with the alleviation of some of the odor issues that you have experienced in that area. We also have just completed a full odor and corrosion study within both the MID and OMID systems. That location that we're talking about there in the ITC corridor is actually the confluence of both the MID and OMID interceptors. They both come down 15-mile and Y in there, and that's one of the reasons why we've had historic odor issues there. I can tell you that we are going out for design for an odor control facility to be located at the corridor there. That RFP will be posted later this month, and we'll be awarding the design hopefully at the October Drain Board Meeting. It is our hope that, that in combination with a couple of other areas, we will construct facilities that will greatly reduce the odor issues, that we can focus on the more granular issues. We are aware of the issue there and a couple other locations as well.
Wonderful. Good to hear. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, anyone else with Mrs. Zerko?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Because I feel special because this is the
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Um, because I feel special, because this is the fourth meeting in a row that somebody from the county's been here to actually address us. But, um, I have to say that my concern tonight isn't-
We won't, we won't bring you guys back for three more meetings.
No. But my concern tonight isn't, um, what people can't see. My concern tonight is what residents are telling us that they can see, and it's the Sterling Relief Drain. And I think that the people that live on that drain want to see it somehow. We know that there's plantings there for different reasons and for, you know, the monarch butterflies and for the absorption of the, you know, um, the rain and everything else that comes through there. But they're bringing, um, to a point that the water levels never come up to where some of these plantings are. So they're really not doing what they were intended to do. And also, um, I have to say, Mr. Baker, you worked for us for a lot of years, so you would know that as far as property maintenance goes, if this were in a vacant lot or probably a homeowner's, um, property, they would be in violation of the, what we consider to be manicured, you know, lawns. So I would appreciate it if we could take it into consideration to at least mow the lawns that are at the top of the drain that are flat. I think it would be, um, it would look better as people drive by, and it's one of the complaints that we get about, you know, all the time from the people that live on the drain. I understand that the drain part of it, it, you know, it's there for a reason, but at least the top part, if it's twenty or twenty-five feet that can get, um, mowed behind those fences, it would make a lot of people happy.
Yeah, we've, we've heard that, that same, um, concern. We got a grant, a two-million-dollar grant from the federal government to do this project. So a lot of the plantings are in the invert. In fact, there's gonna be additional plantings east of Shaner in the invert next year. In terms, though, of what the drain is designed to do, all those plantings not only soak up the water, but even on top of bank, if that gets mowed-
Mm-huh.
It's not supposed to be a golf course. It's supposed to be a natural habitat. And if that gets mowed, for example, for, by a lawnmower, the grass is gonna die in the summer. And if that happens, the dirt is gonna harden and crack. And if that happens, then there's not gonna be the infiltration that we need. So in order to reduce the sediment, the nitrogen, the phosphorus, even on top of bank, that's important to have that vegetation. And again, it's not gonna look like a lawn. It's not designed for that. It's designed to absorb all that water and create a habitat. So that, I think, is the, the paradigm shift for, for the residents, thinking it's gonna be manicured. Now, it does get mowed by our tractor-
Mm-huh.
Um, once a month in the summer, every two weeks or so during the active growing season. But it, it cannot be mowed less than five, six inches, because then that grass will die. And then we'll have the issues of soil flowing down into the drain and not, um, maintain the water quality.
And I would say that you probably could still manicure it to the five or six inches to make it look more appealing from the road. Because, you know what, this isn't out, um, in the country. Um, we're an established city. Um, we want it to be appealing as people drive through, as if we actually maintain what we have. So I don't know what the solution is, but I would appreciate it if you would look into this. And the other part that you were saying, that there's gonna be more plantings east of Shaner, um, uh, the other complaint I'm getting is there's openings there for four-wheelers to come in, and they certainly do use that, um, behind the homes there. And if you look at some of the homes that do not have fencing between themselves and the Freedom Hill property, that's where the access is, is actually coming in from Freedom Hill, you know, onto the, um, and, you know, into the drain area.
Yeah. And that's something we're working on with the city engineer. There is a plan for a maintenance trail along the Sterling Relief, east of Shaner to Freedom Hill. It's about one-point-three miles. We did get a grant to put a maintenance trail in there, so we're working with the city to decide who's gonna maintain that trail. But as part of the bank erosion that we're gonna be doing on the Red Run and Sterling Relief with additional plantings, part of that is gonna be a maintenance trail on the north side, not the south side.
Okay.
So that is something that should be coming to you for an agreement in terms of who's gonna be, you know, maintaining that.
And I, I would agree that there is, the maintenance trail, that's not it. It's the private people that are putting vehicles there that shouldn't be.
Yeah, and what we've, well, that's true. That's, you know, part of that is city property as well in the Sterling Relief, and that may be something that they can better enforce. But our concern was mainly for the Sterling Relief on the west side, that people were mowing into the habitat areas, as they used to, you know, commandeer that areas. That's, that's technically not their property, and, and they've, we've gotten better compliance in terms of them putting sheds and trampolines and things like that. But the reason we sent that letter out and posted some signs were people were actually mowing the habitat area. So I think as people understand that this is a natural, wild habitat area, and it's designed for conveying the drain better, I think they'll come to appreciate that. And we've seen that certainly on the Clinton River spillway, exact same thing. People were complaining because they were used to a golf course manicured property, and that wasn't the design intent, you know, of the drainage system. So-
Right. And I think-
We're gonna be responding to that letter that we received as well.
Okay. And I, and I would think that, um, what they imagined it would look like isn't exactly what it is right now. And if there's a time limit as to when it's going to be mature enough to look as nice as the pictures were originally, that would be helpful.
Yeah. No, that's gonna take some time. We are, we actually also got a grant for noxious weeds, you know, because some of those are weeds that we don't prefer to have. So some of those invasives, we're gonna be treating, we just got a three-year maintenance grant on that as well, so that should help.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel, anyone else? My, my question is about the, um, closure on Fifteen Mile Road. So is, it's the eastbound lane on Fifteen Mile Road, and has any consideration, I don't know if it would be up to you anyways, maybe it would be up to us. Are we just gonna close the eastbound lane and have two westbound lanes open in the middle turn lane? Is that the plan? Do you know? Mr. Downing, do you, the, there'll be an eastbound lane closed
on Fifteen Mile Road. There'll still be one eastbound lane maintained, center turn lane, and then two westbound lanes will be maintained.
Okay. I mean, would it be possible to do two lanes each way with the middle, with the inside lane being a turn lane in order to, and I, I know that, I can't think of an example of that off the top of my head, but I know that there are roads like that out there in order to maintain two-way traffic. Would that be something your department, would it be up to us to determine, since Fifteen Mile Road is a city street?
That would be up to the city, to the city to, to make that decision? Yes.
And it's, and, uh, the western boundary is gonna be near the high school of where that lane closure is?
Yes.
And the eastern boundary is going to be Hayes Road?
Correct.
Right? And you said that closure is going to be from, I didn't write it down in time when it was on the screen.
So the Fifteen Mile Lane Closure in the area of Fontana to Hayes will be in effect for likely the next six months. That's when the spray lining work will occur at that location. After that, there will be a, a subsequent lane closure of Fifteen Mile Road, and it will move to varying locations, and there'll be an updated plan issued when that, when that lane closure changes. We only have access to the interceptor about every fifteen-hundred to two-thousand feet.
Got it.
They're gonna get in and work from that manhole at Fontana and try to get as much as they can efficiently from there. And if and when they have to move, they'll get back to us on the, on the, the need for moving traffic control.
Okay. All right. Very good. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentations and the information tonight. Thank you, Mr. Downing.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Good to see you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Okay, Mayor, continuing on, uh, just two more items. I'm very excited to introduce the next one. It's really good news about our police department. I don't wanna steal any of their thunder, so I'm happy to introduce, uh, Police Chief Dale Dwojekowski.
Mr. Vanderpoel, members of council, Mayor Taylor. Uh, it is a proud night, uh, two-year process, um, through this accreditation process, but we are proudly, um, celebrating tonight our official accreditation. We are now a state-accredited police department, one of thirty-eight in the state. I don't wanna steal too much thunder away from the Michigan Association Chiefs, so please, I'm gonna introduce the two gentlemen behind me in a second. But this has been quite a journey for the last two years. Uh, and we're so very proud to be here. I still can't believe it actually has occurred. Um, and I'm gonna have a few more words about accreditation in a minute, but I am gonna turn the floor over, uh, to retired Chief Neil Rosso, who is the Director of Professional Development and the Accreditation Program Director through MACP. Uh, Neil was actually one of my academy instructors many, many years ago. Um-
I was seven.
Yes. Uh, no, it was a long time ago. Uh, and Neil has done such a great job with this accreditation program, and also Ron Wiles. Uh, Ron is the President of the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police and has traveled, uh, from Grand Blank. He's the Chief of Police there in Grand Blank, uh, to be with us tonight for this accreditation ceremony. And I'll turn over the floor to Neil.
Thanks, Chief. I wasn't gonna mention that I have in the academy, but I've known him long enough to so, to be able to pronounce his last name, which is a challenge. I wanna buy a vowel. It's truly an honor for me to be here. Um, I'm representing our Executive Director, uh, Robert Stevenson, who could not be here tonight. Uh, he apologizes for that, uh, but he's part of the, uh, Sheriff's and Municipal Memorial Response Team. And he's down in Kalamazoo County right now. They had a deputy killed over the weekend. So I bring you greetings from, uh, the members of the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police. I bring you greetings from the thirteen members of the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission. And this is a big deal. Uh, it's an honor to be here. I, I tell people this all the time. I got to do some pretty cool stuff as a cop over about thirty-six to thirty-seven years, but this is probably the neatest thing I've ever got to done in my, do in my career, is come to municipalities that know they have a good police department, and I can tell you have a great police department. Uh, when I was at a, an academy instructor, uh, three years ago, actually a long time ago, uh, many of the members of this agency, the Sterling Heights Police Department came through there as young, uh, police cadets, and I've got to know a lot of them. And, uh, somehow they became command officers over the years. So I'm very familiar with this police department. I'm very familiar with the, uh, reputation it has in the area, and so it's truly an honor to be here. Uh, there are five-hundred-and-eighty-two police departments roughly in the state of Michigan. Uh, there's only thirty-eight that are accredited. So I would put Sterling Heights in probably the thirty-fourth, thirty-fifth that was accredited. Uh, they did voluntarily. Uh, I'm always honest about that. At some point, I, I hope it's voluntold by municipalities, because I think at our, this time in American policing, uh, it certainly is, uh, a, a heck of an achievement. Uh, it is voluntary. Uh, they, they chose to enter this on their own, and, uh, it is a heck of an accomplishment. Uh, I, I think we're all kind of familiar, uh, with accreditation, 'cause our kids go to accredited schools, and hopefully you're treated at an accredited hospital and had the opportunity to go to accredited college. Uh, so it's, it's very similar, uh, to the extent that, uh, the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission certainly has connections with police departments, but we, we stand out to the side, and, and we set a hundred-and-eight standards. Those standards are national and state best practices, and frankly, many of the things that you see on the national news about what police departments, uh, should be doing are accreditation standards require. Things like bias-based police training, de-escalation, and things like that. So they jumped into it, uh, fairly early. Uh, it is not an easy task. There's a hundred-and-eight standards. Uh, they had written directives, policies and procedures, or whatever they call them, to start with, and they had to take those written directives and weave them through that hundred-and-eight standards, which is a challenge enough. But then they have to create these things we call proofs, so that outsiders, two outsiders could come in. They look at the proofs that tell them that they're following the written directives that follow the standards. And I always tell people that it, it's not a big deal when they enter it, and then they usually attack me when I give them the award, because it is a big deal, and it's a lot of work. And, and, uh, I give them a lot of credit for the work they did. So, uh, and, and it's, it's not given, it's truly earned, and we'll be back in three years. It, it's not an ali-ali, yuck, some free that once you're accredited, you get to keep it forever. So, uh, with that, I'll introduce, uh, MACP President Ron Wiles.
Well, good evening, and thank you. I am certainly honored to be here. This is a special day for Sterling Heights and the Sterling Heights Police Department and the residents that you serve. Uh, my name's Ron Wiles. I am the President of the Michigan Association Chiefs of Police and the Chief of Police for Grand Blank Township, which, if you're not familiar, is up in Genesee County, just a little bit south of Flint, about forty-five minutes, uh, north of here. Um, Chief, congratulations. Uh, it's certainly a significant professional accomplishment, the voluntary compliance of a hundred-and-eight best-practice law enforcement standards. It's not something everyone can do. Uh, accreditation makes good departments better, uh, makes great departments better, and certainly this will better serve, uh, the residents of Sterling Heights and your officers that you, under your command. Uh, with that, it is my pleasure and my honor to present you with this. To all who see the certificate, know that Sterling Heights Police Department, having voluntarily complied with the standards established by the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission, deemed essential for the delivery of professional police services and the protection of their community, is hereby awarded the Certificate of Accreditation, effective on this first day of July in the year of two thousand twenty-one for a term of three years. Chief, congratulations.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, again, uh, I'd be remiss. I had my executive command staffs. Uh, Captain Lucas is away at a, uh, conference, um, but I do have, uh, Captain Pappas and Captain Hopper here, and I would like to acknowledge, Captain Pappas, when you start this process, you have to pick an accreditation manager. It's the guy that has to change all the rules and everything that we do. Not very popular position to be in. Um, and for an agency, we have a couple of our officers here tonight, they have seen the changes. We have changed literally hundreds of policies and general orders. And for the line officer, they often say, why are we doing this? What's the purpose of this? And, and maybe they don't understand the bigger picture. The bigger picture is being safer, reducing liability, and making sure you're doing things the best way possible, the best way from national standard, state practice standards. Uh, and it is difficult. Change, changing one document is difficult, one process. We changed hundreds of them in the course of twenty-four months through the middle of COVID. COVID was brutal enough. Um, not only COVID, but what we saw in twenty-twenty, uh, with the social movements that we had. But we're in the middle of accreditation, so, uh, Captain Pappas kept us on track, uh, and Captain Hopper, who's in charge of operations, making sure all of our officers are complying with these new rules. It is truly a group effort. All of the command staff, we had to rewrite every general order, so every lieutenant would have to chime in, review the general order, change it, and then send it back to the group for, um, for the final review, and to make sure it met the criteria from the state of Michigan. And then that was one done. And then weeks later, then number two was done, and then weeks later, number three. This was a long, long process. And not only getting those, um, credentialing, you know, processes standardized, but then living with the new rule. This is the new rule when you are involved in a car chase, a foot pursuit, a use of force in it. You have to do A through Z. So you don't just lie and say, these are the new rules. You actually have to live by the rules. So now we're in the process of living by the new rules that we set up. We are definitely a more professional organization because of it. I think MACP for creating the scaffolding for accreditation, um, and the executive command staff and Captain Pappas for being our accreditation manager for the last two years. Um, and with that, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Chief. Counsel, anyone have any comments or questions for the chief or anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Uh, congratulations. Uh, you know, it's been a long two years, and in a day and age when everything is being questioned as far as a police department and the community interaction, um, we have gone above and beyond. You all have gone above and beyond to make this a transparent, um, uh, department and, uh, community-embracing department. I appreciate every man and woman in the department, both civilian and uniformed, sworn officers. Uh, you guys do a fantastic job. This is, this is proof, proof of, proof in the pudding that we are the best of the best, and I couldn't be more proud. Congratulations.
Counsel?
Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say, congratulations, Chief. Congratulations, Captain Pappas and Hopper. Uh, I think you guys have truly shown a willingness to embrace change. I think that's tremendous for our department. We are a stronger, better department today because of all the work that you guys have done, ladies too. And I just, I'm so proud, because we can really say we are the best police department in the state. It's because of all the hard work, and now we have paper to back up all the hard work we've done. So congratulations. You've earned it.
Mrs. Seroski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So again, I will echo my colleagues' congratulations. I know how hard this is and how I write policies and procedures, standard operating procedures. That's part of my job as Director. And so I know what type of work you guys went through. And to change people, it's not easy. It's very difficult, especially when they think they know what they're doing, and they're pretty sure they're doing it right, and now all of a sudden you're telling them that it's a different way we're going to do it. So congratulations. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming and bringing this award to our department. We know that we have the best. We knew that, and that you guys have now given us the proof behind that. And so, thank you. And thank you for making us prouder and showing that we now have that proof behind it all. So thank you again, and congrats.
Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you and your captains are just fantastic, and this goes to prove what a great department that we have. Now, I just want to know, do you start working tomorrow on the next three years?
Yeah, every year, yeah. There is literally, every year, there is a standardized, you have to turn in proofs of stuff on a yearly basis, and a three-year full recertification, so it does not end.
You are just fantastic. I am so, so proud of all of you. Thank you.
Mrs. Arkham.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, I couldn't be more proud of all of you. I think you've done a great job, not just for the accreditation, but every day that you walk into that police department, I know that you are doing your best and you're trying your best. I've been involved with school accreditations, so I understand the process, the length of time, and schools aren't accredited as often as police departments. So it's even, it's more work for all of you. But I really think you chose the right person to be your accreditation manager. And I will say that, we all know Ken, and if somebody says that they didn't like it, well, guess what? This is the way we're still going to do it because this is the way we have to do it. So you couldn't have picked a better person for that position. So I'm grateful for all that you had to put up with in the last couple of years, too. But yes, couldn't be more proud, and thank you all for doing it voluntarily. You didn't have to do this. It just makes all of us a better city. So I really appreciate it. Nothing further.
Mr. Yanaz. You know, we did all the nice things for the fire department last meeting, so. He's caught.
That list keeps growing. I'm not going to get left out here because, you know, I was one of those guys who complained about why are we doing this? And I now know why. You've done just an absolute fantastic job. You know, one of the models of our city is that we are a progressive community, small P, progressive, and you've shown that this police department can change and change for the positive. And as you stated, you know, through the tumultuous year last year, you know, we had so much going on, and yet you just moved forward. Who's your training officer?
Sergeant Akeem runs training with Andy Pollak and J.
Yeah, they need a hero's award for making sure that everybody is trained to the new standards because that's the hardest part. Like I said, I know the rank-and-file pushes back and pushes back hard, why are we doing this? But I couldn't be prouder of this police department. And not just the two captains, congratulations for all the hard work you did, but up and down the rank-and-file, absolutely, every one of your men and women who serve us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Captain Pappas and Captain Hopper. I know I've spoken with you about this process, and I know it was grueling, and I just want to say on behalf of the 134,000, and we have the number now down to the person, but on behalf of all the residents of Sterling Heights, we thank you for this because this was really a process that was done for them. It was done for the business owners, it was done for the visitors, it was done for the people who come in and out of our city and interact with the police department, which we've all said. Oftentimes, when you interact with the police department, you're interacting with a police officer on one of your worst days. And to know that we have a department that's accredited, that's following the most rigorous standards to treat every person fairly, honestly, with dignity, with respect, and based on the best practices is incredibly important, and it's an honor to really be serving with you guys. It really is. I want to say something. In my role, I get the opportunity to meet a lot of people from around the country. I get to meet big-city mayors, and they do not have the luxury that we have, which is a population that loves our police department, respects the police department, and wants the police department to flourish. And those big-city mayors, and it doesn't necessarily need to be big-city mayors, there's small-city mayors that I've talked to here in Michigan, smaller than Sterling Heights, but that have different populations, that don't have the working relationship with the council and the police chief and the police department that we have. And it is so incredibly important, and it speaks to our crime statistics, it speaks to our property values, it speaks to why people want to make Sterling Heights the place that they live and relocate. And so the men and women of our police department deserve a lot of credit, all the credit, for what you've gone through in these past 24 months. I'm proud of you. I'm proud to serve alongside of you, and I thank you for everything that you do and keep in our city the great city that it is. So God bless. Congratulations. Job well done to you, Chief. Sorry about having to hear that we're the number-one department in the state. But it's not what I'm talking about behind you. Grand Blank, I'm sure is a fine, I'm sure it's a fine town. I'm sure it's a fine town. But it's not Sterling Heights. So thank you. Thank you, Chief. No, I'm just kidding, obviously. And I appreciate you being here. It means a lot to our department and to our city that you gentlemen took time out of your day. It's an incredible honor. So thank you very much, and keep up the great work, Chief.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right.
Mayor, two remaining items. I promise I'll be done by eight. First, a quick update on the outages in Sterling Heights. As many of you know, we had almost 5,000 parcels that were without power for, in some cases, three to five days. And that's significant. We have 40,000 properties overall, and we had 5,000 that were without power. Of course, there were almost 700,000 across the metro area that did not have power. Some still do not have power today. But what I wanted to remind residents is that they can go to the DT website and search for their credit/rebate program. And some of our residents will be eligible for rebate. It's not a lot of money, but nevertheless, you will be eligible. The good news is DT informed me this afternoon that they're going to be issuing those credits automatically. So you'll see it on your bill in the next 45 days, a credit on your bill. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of residents who may qualify. You might want to take a look on DT's website. And Mayor, lastly, at the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the City Council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8E of the Open Meetings Act for council to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with McComb County Circuit Court Case Number 20-308-NI and Case Number 2019-1606-NI. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Thank you for those presentations tonight. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Mr. Manny?
I just have a couple of questions just for Mr. Vanderpoel. Under Item I, to order a bid for tree and stump removal, is there a way that the city may consider removing cotton trees if that's into consideration? I've spoke with a number of residents. They complain of how many, you know, how many times they have tried to complain about, you know, cotton falling from their trees to their lawn, clogging their air conditioning units. And also, under Item J, to order a bid for 19-mile road resurfacing, I live in that area. I appreciate you guys doing something about it. I also want to know if you guys may consider putting, you know, or adding one or two more streetlights because, of course, you know that there are ditches and it is pretty dark in that area, and just so we can prevent, you know, any accidents or any cars falling in that ditch. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manny. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Mr. Orchata?
I was curious how the model of 3D printer was selected for this process. The specific model that you've pulled up here is a MakerBot Sketch Classroom 3D printer. And I know that there's alternative models that perform at a higher capacity that are only at a slightly higher price point, and so I was curious just what the selection process was with regards to this model. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, Mr. Vanderpoel, do you have any information you can provide there with regard to the 3D printer?
Well, Mayor, if you don't mind, I could respond all three quickly.
Yeah, please.
First, regarding the cottonwood trees, while it would be difficult for us to go through the city and remove those, the good news is they are not on our approved list of trees. So with any new development, of course, cottonwoods would not be allowed by any developers or the like. And we do take a good look at our right-of-way, wherever there is cottonwood trees in our right-of-way and they're dying or diseased, you know, we get them scheduled for removal as quickly as possible. But you're right, they're not the most desirable tree, and we get a lot of complaints and concerns about them. The 19-mile road resurfacing, we'll take a look at the streetlights. The good news to report this evening is that we are going to have a pedestrian crossing about midway connecting the Nature Trail where it crosses 19-mile road, or at least lighting it up, I should say. It'll be a strobe light crossing, much like over on a 17-mile road. And those are pretty bright, and they certainly draw attention to the area. But I will take a look and review with our city engineer if there's a possibility to add any other streetlights, or if they're already in the scope perhaps. The 3D printer, all I can say is that we did have a team of individuals in the library that looked at a number of different models, and they centered on this one. However, I'd be happy to have the library director contact you and give you far more details if you can leave your contact information. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
The move is supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and MAPE professional and technical employees. A presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you very much, Mayor. An increasing percentage of police and fire responses involve individuals who are affected by drug, alcohol, or mental health issues. In addition, the city is experiencing an increase in the number of code enforcement cases that involve serious health, safety, and welfare conditions directly attributed to mental health issues. While police, fire, code enforcement personnel do their very best to deal with these incredibly difficult situations, they are not, in many cases, trained and equipped with the access to provide the resources needed to benefit these individuals. In recognition that police, fire, and code enforcement responses are not always the most cost-effective means in dealing with these cases, municipalities across the United States are turning to professionals trained to deal with the challenges presented by these unique cases. Licensed social workers have been hired and increasing numbers to provide the needed expertise to achieve positive outcomes. Not only are social workers relieving the burden on police and fire departments, they're providing critical resources and assistance. And you may recall, at the 2021 Strategic Planning Session, we discussed hiring the city's first social worker, and then the city council, for which I'm very thankful, approved that position in the most recent budget. But the social worker will assist multiple disciplines within the Sterling Heights organization through the following job duties. Now, these are not the entire job duties. I just picked out a few that I thought were noteworthy. And they include: provide social services to the residents of Sterling Heights through crisis intervention, diagnostic evaluation, and emergency response for criminal cases, domestic disputes, traumatic incidents, indigent populations, victims of violent crimes, mental health, substance abuse cases, to name just a few. Work closely with the Sterling Heights Police, Fire, Neighborhood Services, and Parks and Recreation Department while providing assistance and coordination for the delivery of social services. Serve as a key stakeholder and liaison to the city's Safe Homes Task Force. We've had a lot of challenges in this area over the last few years, especially as it relates to the illness of hoarding, which has become very prevalent in today's society. Provide in-home comprehensive assessments when appropriate. Provide short-term counseling and referral services to individuals and families for short or extended treatment. Service and advocate for victims of crime occurring in Sterling Heights, which may include testifying at criminal, juvenile, and probate court on behalf of victims and their families. Assist indigent referrals locating and applying for financial assistance and benefits, which is incredibly important. Assist in critical incidents, stress debriefings within the police and fire departments, and large-scale emergencies. Develop and maintain a positive working relationship with local school districts, community support agencies, and the like. Coordinate referrals to appropriate service providers as needed, including, but certainly not limited to, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and also the county's Health Department. As I mentioned, the position is budgeted in the current budget. In order to create the social worker position and the job classification, the city was required to negotiate with MAPE Professional and Technical Employees Bargaining Unit. The memorandum of understanding and job description has been approved by that unit. And so with all this in mind, I respectfully request that the mayor and city council approve the MOU that is before you this evening, and we will forge ahead in getting this position filled as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Mr. Orchata?
Honestly, I'd just like to thank the council for taking this particular topic seriously. I think that having social services collaborating directly in this capacity is highly important, and thank you for doing it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Not counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Saroski.
Thank you. Resolve to appoint the memorandum of understanding between the City of Sterling Heights and MAPE Professional and Technical Employees, creating the social worker job classification and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign it on behalf of the city.
Support.
The move is supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Saroski?
Yes, I do just want to have a couple of clarification points, and then I do want to have some comments. So this is a full-time position through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Is that correct?
Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Tom Saroski, yes, that is correct. It's a full-time position. It will be based out of the police department, but as I just mentioned, it will collaborate with numerous city disciplines, so it'll be a very collaborative approach.
Okay, thank you very much. And I, as a Director of Nursing, I work closely with social workers. We have them on my staff. They do a little bit different approach, certainly as a medical social worker, but social workers have multi-facets and different approaches in different areas of their work. But this is certainly something that, as stated, is a collaborative approach. Social workers can provide a lot of insight, and this is not just a position where they would work specifically and only with residents. They can also support and help our officers and the departments that they would need to coordinate with to help the residents get the services that they would need, the help that they would need, and to coordinate the best ways that they could, sometimes their issues are not just legal and not just in need of interment or to be put into custody. But there are many things, obviously, mental illness is just a part of it, substance abuse is others, as Mr. Vanderpoel did read out. So this is very helpful, as we've seen a lot of, you know, there's, so unfortunately, we have people that are panhandling on our streets. And there are so many ways that we can reach out to them besides just arresting them and moving them along. So I'm very happy to see that we have an opportunity to address some of these issues besides arresting and not really dealing with the true issue and what's going on. So mental health is truly underfunded, underutilized, and people are undertreated. And so we need to have, at least start that approach. I'm happy to have this started in our city. Just as an aside, just so the residents can understand, the rate of pay, social workers are not very highly paid. This is not a very, they don't go into this position, and this is probably, it says, for a bachelor's degree in social work, but master's degree is highly preferred, and we will probably find many master's degree candidates at this $53,000 a year. That's not a lot of money. That's barely enough to That's barely enough to make, you know, make ends meet as a master's prepared person. But I think that this just helps you understand that we'll get a lot of bang for our buck. A master's prepared social worker is very well qualified to take on this role. So I'm very happy to see that we're doing this, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarowski. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanez.
Not the one up, Councilwoman Sarowski, she works with a social worker. I live with one, so I know how important they are. She reminds me all the time. They are incredibly important, and they do incredible work, and as Councilwoman Sarowski, Mayor Protem Sarowski said, they're very underpaid, and that's not just because my wife's a social worker, but they do a ton of work, and I can attest to the fact that they bring a lot of that work home with them. So it's a very important position. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. So the job description says, under the supervision of the police chief, who is this social worker going to be reporting to directly? Or do we not know that yet?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Yanez, we don't know exactly yet, but normally, a position like this would report to a lieutenant. So the chief will finalize that in the ensuing months, obviously, before the position comes on board. But again, it will be based out of the police department, of course.
And is there going to be policies and procedures set up? I'm trying to figure out how all these other departments are going to access the social worker. If they're working under the direction of the police chief and under the direction of a police lieutenant, at what point will the fire chief or community relations or wherever be able to access the social worker to do some sort of job on their behalf?
Well, that's a very good question as well, Councilman Yanez. Right now, when we have these incidents, we deal with them in a highly collaborative way, a team approach. We meet regularly with all of our city disciplines to talk about our Safe Homes Initiative, which addresses a lot of issues, as I mentioned. You may recall some of the cases where we had an inordinate amount of pets in a home, we've had a few of those. We always have an ongoing hoarding case or two, which are very complicated and difficult to work through. Those are always ongoing, and this person will be joining that team and advising in a team-like way. So it's not going to be the situation where a director has to call up the social worker and say, I need you to do this. We're already addressing these issues in a highly collaborative team approach. We're just adding another team member that can help guide us through some of these very difficult situations.
So just let me clarify, will there be an SOG written up specifically for the use of this social worker, or a set of policies and procedures as to what the, I know we talked about the scope of what the social worker's going to do, but on paper, will there be a specific scope of work, not just a job description, but a scope of work and a standard operating guideline for using this social worker? Will the police chief be responsible for writing some sort of standard operating guideline for the social worker?
Spoken like a true firefighter who is engrossed in standard operating guidelines, let me just say this, we have 460 full-time employees and another 200 part-time employees. We can't possibly have an SOG for every position. We do have a job description for every position. In some cases, we do develop SOGs and administrative procedures in orders related to different initiatives and functions, but it doesn't drill down to specific positions. So I would say it's not likely we'll have a specific SOG, standard operating guideline, or an administrative procedure and policy order as it relates to the position itself, but we may develop orders, as we historically have, to address various issues like drug abuse, panhandling, and the like, our need to address excessive animal hoarding and hoarding illness in general, so on and so forth.
Okay, I just think this seems like we're going to be a learn-as-we-go. I know other communities have social workers, but knowing that they're going to interface with county, with state, and aging issues, the area agency on aging, and my concern is, how far is our social worker, our employee, going to be able to go in regards to helping somebody else? Is it just a matter of, here's the phone number, call here, or I'm going to call this agency for you, and do they do follow-up? There's a lot more to it than just, you know, showing up to a hoarder's house and say, you know, here's my card, right? So anyways, I just think that we have a lot of, there's a lot of growth and potential, and I guess I'm concerned that we're going to have, we're going to find out, maybe something untoward will happen, or whatever. I just, I guess I'm looking for boundaries, and without boundaries being written on paper, like a good firefighter, we want to know what's right and what's wrong, or what's good and what's bad, or how far we can go. And that's all I'm looking for, Mr. Vanderpool. I just think that a social worker position can move into many different spaces, talk to many different groups and organizations, and, you know, when do you stop at the border? You know, what's the water's edge for our social worker, and it moves on to something else? But, you know, I think honestly, the best thing to do is hire a social worker and let that social worker help develop those SOGs. And I'm all done, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Yanez.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool, will this position have set hours? As we all know, you can never really predict when you may need a social worker in the field, so how will that be handled?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Schmidt, another very good question. I mean, the position will require normal hours, however, as you just noted, you never know when emergencies are going to occur. They occur all hours of the night, all hours of the day, including weekends, so the person will have to be flexible, and we will have to be flexible with their schedule depending on the caseload. So if they have a heavy caseload on something that is involving weekend hours, you know, we'll have to be flexible with some of their hours during weekdays. You know, we can't work the position 80 hours a week. Of course, if we did, we'd have to pay overtime, but we'll have to be mindful of that. So it's really no different than when we have situations now when there's an emergency. You know, we have to call in our Safe Homes Task Force. Sometimes it might be Sunday at 3:00 in the morning to address an issue, where a building official, our code enforcement officers, police and fire, all have to go to the scene and respond, not only talk with individuals, interview them, but develop an action plan. And the social worker's going to be involved, again, in that team approach way, and will be one more advisor to the process.
Thank you. I think something that residents don't realize is exactly what you just said. It's happening now that this team gets together at all hours of the day and night sometimes, and, you know, to have a social worker is a tremendous tool to have placed in that toolbox along with that team. So, thank you. I was just worried about the hours and if they were on call and that whole thing, so thank you.
Mrs. Koski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question, will we be lending this social worker out to other communities or other agencies?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Koski, that's not the plan. We think the workload will be such that we're not going to have that opportunity, but there sometimes are situations where we have to work with other communities, depending on the emergency and maybe the spillover. It just really depends. Sometimes we may have a situation involving our participants in the Parks and Recreation programming that may not be a resident in Sterling Heights, so then we have to work with officials and perhaps that individual's hometown. So in that case, there may be some collaboration in that manner. But no, we don't envision sharing the position, if anything. The way things are going in society, and this isn't just a Sterling Heights issue, we're likely going to need more support services in the social work area moving forward.
Are you aware of any other local cities that have social workers? I'm talking about like Warren, Clinton Township, Shelby, Utica?
I am not, Councilwoman Koski, not in Macomb County. There may be. Certainly, the county health department may have social workers that they utilize, but I'm not aware of any other municipalities in Macomb County or the area. Where Livonia, okay, they may have just, you're right, because we use their job description to partially develop ours. So yes, Livonia would be one, but they're few and far between. I suspect that will be changing over time, and I would imagine Grand Rapids may have a social worker or two, and certainly the city of Detroit.
Well, the reason I ask that is you might be able to use their format for putting together any additional job description for us. Thank you.
Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. First of all, I think this is a great idea. My concern is a little bit different, because, first of all, the social worker that's going to be working for us isn't working for a specific agency, isn't working at a hospital where there's a limited amount of, say, contact with a number of people. Bringing somebody in, we know that we have 134,000-plus people, which makes this, I think, a different level for expectations. My concern is that the salary that we budgeted for isn't going to draw the person that we need. And if you want this to be successful, we have to have some flexibility there as far as the salary as well, because I don't want to set this up to fail. I want to make sure that we hire the best person for this job. So that's one of my concerns, is actually the range of the salary. So, and like I said, this isn't, it isn't a hospital setting, it's not a nursing home setting, it's not a setting like CARE or Southeast Michigan. This is about a social worker coming into the city. So my concern is, our expectations are pretty high, and I hope that we can draw the right person to do this, and I don't want money to be a factor. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also echo Mrs. Zarco's idea here. I'm concerned about the salary being a little too low, starting in the 50s. I know, what we're asking of these people to do, it's a lot of a job, and the idea that, over time, it'll go to $66,000, that's kind of where it caps out, I don't know a lot of people who could really live on that and work all these hours and do all this stuff. So I think that the salary is a little bit low. Other than that, I fully support the position. I think it's excellent that we are adding it to not just our police department, but to the city as a whole. I think it shows you how forward-thinking our city is in our departments. You know, sitting on council, I know that we've dealt, each one of us, with citizens who have mental illness or have issues that we can't easily solve, and we can't really force them off on other departments because they can't easily solve them. It's just another tool in the toolbox to help us, help the people of Sterling Heights. So I'm fully in favor, I'm going to vote in favor, but I do agree with Mrs. Zarco that we might want to look at maybe raising that salary a little bit, because I don't know a lot of master's candidates who'd want to make $10,000 a year. It is underpaid. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Radke. Mr. Vanderpool, can you talk about how the salary was arrived at?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. It's important to know that we did do a salary survey, so we did look at other communities, we looked at the state system, and we developed the salary accordingly. So this is well within the average, slightly above the average, of what social workers are getting in the market at this time. So, you know, in the next agreement, they'll be topping out over $70,000. So, you know, again, if we feel we need to adjust it, we always have that luxury to do so, but I think this is well within the range where we're going to attract some really good candidates, and we also do have very good benefits that we still offer as a community, not to mention a rock-solid championship team. I think a lot of social workers will like to work for this great team, so I think we're well within the market. I know personally, our daughter's a social worker who works for the state and has had a number of social worker positions, and this is certainly within the range that she has experienced, so I think we're there. I appreciate the concerns, and we'll monitor it very closely.
Okay, I think that really is the most important thing, is that we're creating not only a new position, but we're creating a position that we've never had before. So to me, as Councilman Yanez said, I think it's important to get this person hired and then lean on their expertise to see what areas of the city we need it the most, and I'm sure that this social worker is going to have more than enough work on his or her plate to keep busy. And my hope is that this is going to evolve into something that we'll be able to continue to provide even better services to our residents than we have. You know, we speak very highly of our police department. We have two police officers in here that do a fine job. We spoke, again, very, very highly of our police officers and our police department, and I don't mean this in any denigrating way, but sometimes, you know, to a hammer, everything looks like a nail, and that doesn't mean that our police department isn't well-trained to deal with a wide variety of issues, but we are missing the boat entirely if we just ignore the fact that there's a mental health crisis going on. We talked about MML earlier today, just informally with some of my colleagues, which is the Michigan Municipal League. I think, was it, Mrs. Zarco, I think you were in, it must have been seven or eight years ago that we were in a presentation where mental health with the police department was a major thing, and you had police officers saying, like, this need, and it's only gotten more attention and been highlighted even more. So we are certainly, I think, on the right path here. I'm excited to be able to offer this service to residents who really need it the most, and so thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, for bringing this to us, and to the union for negotiating this position. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing how it goes. We're certainly interested in it, and I think it'll be a great benefit for our residents. So without any further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next item on our agenda tonight is to consider a nomination to the City of Sterling Heights Planning Commission. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, I know that it's important to get this position filled, but I would like to take a, I don't want to say two weeks, because I'm not sure when the next meeting is. Is it three weeks? I'd like to postpone this, just so that I have some, a little bit more time to talk with interested candidates. Would it be the September 7th meeting? So I'd entertain a motion to postpone this item to the September 7th city council meeting.
So moved.
Support. The move is supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next is the, to consider appointments to the City of Sterling Heights Youth Advisory Board. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we have two openings. These are both city council appointments. Is there anyone who'd like to make one or two appointments to the youth advisory board?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
I only see one, so. Resolve to appoint Myrna Baca to the youth advisory board to a term ending June 30th, 2022, took the appointment meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter subsection 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
The move is supported. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There is one additional opening on the youth advisory board. Anyone have an appointment? If not, I would entertain a motion to postpone this item to the September 7th city council meeting.
So moved.
Support.
The move is supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That completes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Start with you, Mr. Manny.
Welcome again. I just have, for Mr. Vanderpool, I have some images that I need to show that, you know, one of them is street, on a side street on 14 Mile and Dequender, and a side street in a neighborhood on Viceroy, V-I-C-E-R-O-Y, and Terry, T-A-R-R-Y. It's kind of like, almost a sinkhole that's going to happen soon. If you guys want to just take a look at it?
So this is cool. We haven't done this in a very long time. I almost forgot it existed. You can just put your iPad right on the table. See where it's lit up there on the table?
It's kind of like a, it's got like a little...
So, all right, no.
Look at, and look at the screen.
Keep going.
See?
Look at.
All right, pull it back, Dan. I feel like Mr. Jefferson. Pull it back, Dan. Pull it back, Dan.
So I have, so if you guys look around here, you know, it's, it's moving. If you stand on it, you know, it'll move. Um, cars treat, are treating it like a speed bump, so please take a look at it if you guys have the chance. Um, just don't want it to be, you know, a sinkhole soon. And another thing is, on 19 and-
Whoa.
Why, what is it? I'm so sorry. On 19 between Ryan and Mount, on behind Trillium Drive, um, this is a pond over here. If you guys can just take a look at it, um, half of the pond is covered by, uh, leaves or whatever they are. So if you guys can, so this whole thing right here.
Lily pads.
It's rarely bad, and I spoke about ponds tremendously since possibly April or May, so if you guys want to just take a look at it, and, or one resident emailed it to me, so I just want to bring it up to your guys' attention, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manny. Appreciate that.
President.
Yeah, very well done. You know, you've got, we used to have pizza boxes full of, uh, flyers and, and pictures and whatnot.
High charts.
High charts.
High charts.
High technology.
Yeah. Tin cans.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Um, Myrna, I want to apologize, because I'm technically out of order, but you can decide how you want to treat it. Um, with the issue with the social worker, are, are there going to be at some point, um, is she going to have subordinates under her that are going to be trained by her to be able to help? Is all I wanted to find out. That's it.
Okay.
And that would be directed to Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, and we'll go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, I think, I think, as we discussed, and it's, it's fair question, because, you know, the agenda item didn't really specifically state the social worker, but I, I think it would be fair to say we're going to see how the, at right, at this point, we're hiring one social worker, and there's no immediate plans for there to be more. There's no immediate plans for-
I'm not talking about a social worker, I'm talking about, you know, a person that works under her.
Right.
So that she would be able to communicate with the topic that would have-
I understand. I, I get it. I get it.
For example, a person like Ms. Arkel, as far as-
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off, because it's hard for the audience at home, but what you're, what you're asking is, will the social worker have subordinates underneath him or her and be able to direct tasks to that person? Uh, Mr. Vanderpoel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's premature to say at this point in time, uh, we, you know, and this is a, a new position, but I do believe in the future, we will have to devote additional resources to this area, and that may include a subordinates, but it's premature to say at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Anything else under, uh-
Uh, let me just comment on the roads, Mayor. Uh, we will look at those, uh, issues that one picture is very disturbing to me, so we'll make sure we get on that right away, and we'll get that inspected tomorrow and get it scheduled for improvement. The Trillium Pond you referenced was designed, uh, to, um, drain in the manner that you showed on the picture, and the growth that you see on the picture is perfectly, uh, normal. Uh, that's within a conservation easement controlled by Eagle. Uh, so there's very little that the city can do with that pond, other than treat for, uh, fragmites, and, uh, that is essentially it. Uh, so we're, that is highly regulated under a conservation easement. And, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Koshubsky?
We do have two matters tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Koshubsky. Council, open it up for any, uh, reports or new business tonight?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Arkel.
Uh, Mr. Manny, when we were truckling here, it's because I think the majority of us have been up to Trillium for that conservation area. And when we were talking, when Mr. Baker was here, and he says it's a natural habitat, there's a difference between a natural habitat in a conservation area. And when it's a conservation area, it's like all hands off, this is the way it's supposed to be. But all of us have been out there, and I, hours, hours between, uh, Mr. Koshubsky, how many hours did we spend, uh, talking about it before we actually visited it? Mrs. Schmidt and I have been out there, I think, three times in this season to look at it before and after the growth of the lily pads. And I'm trying to think, but yes, we all know about Trillium, okay? But I'm glad you know about it, too. And I really have nothing else to say. Mayor Taylor.
Thank you, Ms. Arkel. Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel, there's been a lot of discussion about, um, how we're changing the water billing system to monthly, and, um, the concern by a lot of residents are that this administration fee that's going to be charged monthly instead of quarterly is going to increase how much they're paying in administration fee. Um, can you go over how that procedure is really going to work?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilwoman Schmidt, first, thank you for highlighting the fact that we are transitioning, uh, from quarterly bills to monthly bills. Uh, monthly bills are our best practice. Everyone's accustomed to paying bills monthly. Uh, there, it, it's, it's just an industry-wide, uh, practice, so we're happy to transition to that. Also, we have, uh, a new water rate structure, uh, that offers up a lot of, uh, benefits to our, our residents across the city. So, uh, we encourage residents to go to our website and, and go to the DPW page, and you can look at the, uh, new water rate structure, and, uh, you can actually type in your address, and you'll get the estimated amount of, uh, what your, uh, new monthly bill will be under the new water rate structure. In many cases, there'll actually be a reduction, but since you've asked me, and I'll get to your question in a second, I also wanted to say that this also, uh, provides the city the opportunity, uh, to, uh, afford residents more ability to control their water usage. Uh, we'll be able to offer dynamic pricing, so that means that residents will be able to use, uh, water at non-peak times, thus lowering their bill. And they'll also be able to detect any sort of water leaks much quicker, uh, than what they've been able to do in the past. A running toilet, for example, uh, can cost hundreds of thou, uh, excuse me, hundreds of dollars over a quarterly billing cycle. With a monthly billing cycle, you're going to notice that right away. But once we're done with this new installation, you can get an app on your phone, and you can track your daily usage. You can set targets, and if there's any day that goes over in, in average, you'll be alerted of that, and you can try to identify, okay, what was the problem? So it empowers customers to use their water in a more efficient way, in many cases, reducing their water bills. Now, to your point, uh, you mentioned the administrative fee. It's actually a, a fixed fee, and, and right now, it's, uh, uh, the fixed fee is $39 quarterly. Uh, that fixed fee is not increasing when we transition to monthly, it's simply being divided, uh, by, uh, a third. So instead of 39, the monthly fixed fee will be $13. Now, that's included in the average bill of $65. The average water and sewer bill in Sterling Heights is $65 monthly. So that will be validated when we transition to monthly bills, uh, because then you'll be able to readily see, am I above the average or below the average? And if I'm above the average, why am I above the average? Uh, so you can see that there's so many benefits. Now, we're not quite ready to transition to monthly bills. It's going to take a while. Uh, it'll, it'll probably be, uh, in the next year before we transition to monthly billing. We're installing the readers as we speak, and that's going very well. Uh, so I know that's a little more than you asked for, but thank you.
That's okay, thank you. Um, and, uh, on a final note, uh, I'm going to bring up Jolly Bee, because those of us that have never experienced Jolly Bee don't understand the, the, the people that are elated that they don't have to drive to Toronto or to Chicago when they want Jolly Bee. There are so many people excited about this restaurant coming to Sterling Heights. I've never seen, it's a phenomenon, I've never seen anything like it. We thought Portillo's was big. Well, you know what? I think Jolly Bee's going to be bigger.
Good to be agreed.
So I, I think it's a, it's a great, great situation, and there are an awful lot of people that are very excited for that opening of Jolly Bee. And with that, nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Anyone, Mr. Radke?
I'd have to echo Mrs. Schmidt on that one. My best friend is Filipino, and he is like, ah, he's ready for Jolly Bee, and I'm excited. We have one more interesting and new restaurant here in Sterling Heights. Earlier today, we cut the ribbon on our, our, our new mural on the side of Ventimiglia's, and I'd have to say, it was a wonderful event. It shows you how far public art can bring the community together. I think that Ventimiglia's is doing tremendous things down there at Dodge Park and 15 Mile to really build the community space, both with the mural, with their new restaurant next door, with the ability of people to walk around, and I hope, you know, with our new ordinances that allow, uh, mixed use down there, we might see some more, some more additions, because I, I think the public mural program is, is wonderful. I think our public art program really sets us apart, and I think if you drive down Dodge Park, take a look at 15 Mile, and just look at how much the mural really adds to the area. So I'm so happy to have cut that ribbon. Uh, Wendy Popko, the artist, has done tremendous work for us. I, I want to credit the Arts Commission for pushing these things forward, and now I got to say to Mr. Vanderpoel, let's find the next one, let's do the next one. I'm ready, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Radke. Anyone else?
Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the help of, uh, Mayor Protem, Liz, would you take off your scarf and show your scarf?
Well, I was going to mention it. Let's see if I can-
I mentioned the mural today.
Okay, here's the mural.
Isn't that great?
Just wanted to let the residents at home know that they can purchase a scarf like this through Community Relations. I believe the cost is-
Thirty-five dollars. Yes.
And the, uh, money will go towards the arts program.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm going to get mine later.
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, Liz.
No, you go. You finish.
One other question, through the chair to, uh, Mr. Vanderpoel. Cottonwood trees were mentioned, uh, this evening. Now, if I remember correctly, cottonwood was discussed in our tree preservation, that they would be included in the count, but is there any way that we can say, count them, but don't keep them?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Kosky, uh, I, you, you might be right. Um, I'd have to check with our city planner, but I think that, uh, that, as I said, when we have a new development, there are specified trees that are now allowed, and trees that are not allowed, and cottonwoods are one of them that are not allowed, so they, they might be required to take those down. In any case, most developers would want to do that, they're just not a desirable tree. But I'll get you more detailed information.
Because I would just like to make sure that they understand that, yes, we are going to count them, yes, you will have to replace them, but please replace them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kosky. Anyone else, council? Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So yes, you did see my scarf. It does not go completely with my outfit, and you know I'm a little particular about that, but I had to wear it in honor of Ms. Popko and her new mural. The mural, I don't think it was mentioned specifically, but it's an interactive mural. So when you go to, if you get a chance, residents, to go to see it outside of, um, Ventimiglia's on their wall, you download an app on your phone, it has some interactive things. You can play soccer with the kids, and you bounce the ball, it's, it's, and watch the dog walk. It's, it's really interesting how, um, technology has a, a place with this art, and so please try it, and please see how that, that works. It's something that's completely different than any other piece of art. And, and as Wendy had mentioned, with the oldest type of art, art as a mural is as old as it gets, cave paintings, as she said, hieroglyphics, frescoes from the, the Italian era, so that is as old as type of art gets, yet we merged it with, with, uh, technology. So something very interesting and near, and interesting, um, for all of us. So thank you again, um, to Wendy for that, and thank you to Ventimiglia's. We painted over their sub with some, uh, before, so we owed it back to them to give them something beautiful. So I'm very glad that we could do that with, for them. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Mr. Yenaz?
Uh, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel, will your office be putting together a, a brief or a synopsis on the results of the census for Sterling Heights?
Mr. Vanderpoel?
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Yenaz, yes, we certainly will be, we, as the mayor indicated, we already have our, our numbers. Uh, I'm pleased to say that the city's population went up, uh, by 4,647 individuals, so our new population is 134,346 people. So the city continues to grow. We expect that's going to continue over the next 10 years. Uh, so, uh, yes, we've, I sent out a summary, uh, to the city council. We'll be, uh, posting that on our website relatively soon. We want to make sure that we get through and digest all the information, and we'll get it out as soon as possible. We also are collaborating with some COG2 to make sure that we present it in a format where that's consistent with some of the other communities and how they're presenting and so on. Uh, but yes, uh, information's available, uh, good news for Sterling Heights. Uh, we continue to be one of the largest cities in the state and continuing to grow. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. I'm just very interested in our, in our, uh, demographics, especially in the category of, uh, the age of a population. I look forward to any documents you send. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. Uh, I want to thank you for all your great comments tonight. I was, uh, while you guys were talking, I was, uh, checking out the Jolly Bee menu, which I don't know.
It's diverse.
It is. I mean, I don't even know where to, where to begin. You've got, their signature fried chicken is perfectly seasoned to be crispy-licious on the outside and juicy-licious on the inside, and it looks like you're encouraged to pair the fried chicken with a plate of spaghetti with cheddar cheese on top of it.
And hot dogs.
And peach mango pies, and rice balls, and, uh, halibut family pack. I mean, this is a very interesting, I mean, it's sort of, I'm, I'm being a little bit facetious here, but it, it, it's, one of the interesting things we saw in the census numbers is that our population is becoming more diverse, and we've seen a big increase in our Asian population, and, and I know we have a very active Filipino population in the city of Sterling Heights. Uh, so this is just, I think, another testament that, you know, I, I looked it up, it does not appear that there are any Jollibees in the state of Michigan, so this would be another first in the state within a stone's throw from the Portillo's, which is the first in the state, and there's really a lot going on there with the, with the Shake Shack coming in, and, um, even as Lakeside is transitioning, I think retailers are finding that, uh, what we're doing on, or what's going on on Hall Road is really somewhere that they want to be, and so it's, it's great to see that. Um, I was, uh, excited to be a part of that mural presentation today. I think Wendy Popko does a tremendous job. It's really exciting, uh, to see that. I was able to participate in the augmented reality portion of it, and that was awesome and fun as well. Um, and so it's just, uh, it's a, a great, great thing for the city of Sterling Heights, a lot going on. Um, I will say, one final thing, we've got, uh, the Labor Day break coming up. I actually had the opportunity today to speak with our Labor Secretary, Marty Walsh,